Good morning, everyone. We'll go ahead and call the January ninth Board of Commissioners meeting to order. Thanks to everyone for being here. This morning, we've got Mr. Dan, Daniel Shear from Central Christian Church, I believe, to give our opening prayers.
Let's pray, shall we? Heavenly Father, we do acknowledge you this day. You alone are God. You are the Creator, Sustainer, the Author of life, the God who heals us, and we acknowledge your purpose throughout the created order, even to the level of local government here in Davies County, Indiana. We see situations which make governance seem impossible at times, ethics that are so easily displaced by power, accountability that seems so elusive and ill-defined, and much seems out of our hands. We pray for your eyes to see and ears to hear, to know that what seems impossible for us is possible with you. Help us to know the reality of legitimate authority even here and even now. We pray your blessings on this day which you have given us. We pray all this in your holy name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Okay, first up on our agenda, we've got the annual drainage board, election of officers. Historically, the auditor has asked us to keep the same slate of officers throughout all the different boards. So whoever's president, vice president, and secretary. So it just makes it easier for them. So do we need to, do we open up the drainage board meeting? Okay, so we'll go ahead and call to order the drainage board. Just for a reminder, the three commissioners serve on the drainage board in Davies County. Fortunately, we're one of the few counties who do not have to meet very often regarding drainage issues, which is not extremely common. So we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Are there any topics of discussion that we need to address?
The drainage board, no.
If not, the election of officers, any suggestions? They are currently, Ron is secretary, Michael is vice, and I am president.
Yeah, I make a motion to leave it the same.
Any other comments? Harry, none. I entertain a motion to approve.
The move.
A motion made. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold. All in favor, say aye. Our motion passes three zero. And I'll go ahead and adjourn the drainage.
It's always one of the most confusing meetings of the year.
Okay, next up, we'll go ahead and open up the Board of Finance meeting. The three commissioners have the honor of serving on the finance board as well.
Yeah, Jamie.
And then we got, obviously, our fearless leader. Ms. Jamie, if you'd like to come up and give your finance report.
Good morning. I have a good report this year versus last year, and I do have a table that shows the last 10 years of interest. I think in your packet I had the interest, it was over $2 million, 542, oh, 9285, and we offered it to all financial institutes in the county, which that's in the policy. I had looked into going out of the county, and it is in policy to stay in Davis County. And the highest bids were from Oh National and Springs Valley. Oh National hadn't had any CDs invested with them for a long time, and they were all certificates of deposit. And all the copies of the bids are in the auditor office, and each individual, such as Chris with the highway recorder, and then we still have the regular checking, German American, also First Financial. We're earning, Chris's highways are all over 5%. The recorder's five. Visor Bureau's almost five, and then reassessments four, six, six. Questions?
No, the only question is on this interest is how does this, does it dump back into their account? I mean, each department head knows how much.
Yeah, the reassessments due next Friday, and I get a notice from each bank saying when it's coming due, and I go to the office holder supervisor, and I send out bids four or five days before.
Okay, so like on the $2.5 million of total interest earned in 2023, when does the council know that number? Do they know that before their budget?
Yes, it's our line budget.
Okay.
Right, it shows all our investments, and then we report to Gateway once a year, and then it's on our cash book.
Okay.
And I got a little sticky here. Reassessment recorder. Bridge, highway, highway, Visor Bureau. I have that, I was gonna give you that part now here. The last 10 years. Thousand, up to two million. Pretty good. So I'm looking forward to every year.
I plan a higher, higher interest rate environment.
Yes, and most generally, there are one year. The office holder asked me yesterday going two, but the banks can't project. They usually, highest is a year. They do have nine months, but I mean, that, you know how fast that rolls around.
Yeah.
I'm curious. I just have a question. Maybe you guys know, or maybe the auditor knows. What, what are all the funds that we're calculating? Is this every single?
So that's what she was referring to, the different highway department in different places. So some of those funds, that interest rolls back into that account, and it's specific to those. So they all don't just jump in. So the grand total that she's giving you is across the board to everything.
Yes, and it, it goes by their, like, 1189's their recorder. It's their perpetuation, right, Gene? And she chose to use that interest, I don't know if it was last year, year before, but most of them just put it all back in the CD.
It stays within their fund. It doesn't necessarily go into the general fund. So the highway, they maintain their money. They're, they're gaining that within their investment.
I know last year, maybe a year ago, we, we changed from one bank that held our HSAs to a different bank. And, I mean, is that something, because with scale, we can probably get better, better rates. I know that, you know.
Each individual piece is like, is bid out, so that when Jamie goes out for bids, because they're all due at different times.
Got it.
So the HSA, they had a different component that was available at Springs Valley versus where we were at before. There was other options.
I don't know if you noticed on, in your packet, the German American Market Smart, that was something new that they offered us, and we could move that liquid at any time into the regular checking. So as you can see, that was a good rate. So that's something they offered us and approached us. Because we, First Financial, they're very good. I can't quote off the top of my head. It's on the daily balance where.
Really surprising with some of the people they have working there.
They, they fight over us, Nathan, I'm telling you. They call on this.
I shouldn't be joking about that stuff.
I know. They want our bid, I mean, Home Buildings coming next week to see me, not Miss, not Mr. Head, but one of the Sander boys, no, Jeff Cardinal, I think, but anyway.
Sounds great.
Yeah.
Gentlemen, any questions?
Questions?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
And adjourn the finance meeting.
I need a commute officers.
Yeah, oh yeah. Yes, that's right. Election of officers, do we have any motions on the election? I guess we'll keep it the same, right?
I was making a motion to keep it the same. Ronald, Secretary, Michael Taylor is Vice President, and Nathan is, Nathan Gabhart is President.
A motion made by Commissioner Taylor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold. All in favor, say aye. Our motion passes three zero. And now we entertain a motion to adjourn the finance meeting. And motion made by Commissioner Taylor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold. All in favor, say aye. Our motion passes three zero. Thank you, Jamie.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, next up, we got the, we'll go ahead and reconvene the Board of Commissioners meeting. First up, we got the election of officers. Michael, if you want to.
Yeah, I was making a motion to keep it the same. Ronald is Secretary, Michael Taylor is Vice President, and Nathan Gabhart is President.
Okay, and do we have a, a motion made by Commissioner Taylor? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold. All in favor, say aye. Our motion passes three zero. And all the commissioners should have received their annual conflict of interest forms. I don't actually know where they are. You can complete those. That'd be great. And also updated contact information sheets and so forth. Next up, we've got the annual appointments. I'll go ahead and open this up for discussion. I know there was an earlier request to maybe go through these individually. Commissioners, what's your, what's your preference?
I had requested to take the county attorney out with any of their appointments, but how you want to handle it's up to you.
Michael?
Yeah, I don't have any issue with the, our appointments for the commissioners this year. So I would make a motion to approve all the appointments on the list, which would be the county, county attorney, IT director, cornass maintenance supervisor, veterans affair, highway department supervisor, and wages measures. Make a motion to approve those at stands.
I fully support all the appointments except for the county attorneys. So just want to go on record as that. That's why I'll be voting against it.
Okay, motion made to approve all by Commissioner Taylor. Do we have a second? I will second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose.
Nay.
Okay, motion passes two to one. Everyone should have received a copy of the meeting minutes for the, sorry, there's the contact sheets. For the December 26 meeting. Are there any changes or revisions that need to be made?
So, none.
So, none, okay. I'll take that as a motion to approve by Commissioner Arnold. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Taylor. All in favor, say aye. Our motion passes three zero. It's like the highway department brought their security team today. Chris, good morning.
Morning. Yeah, I guess we can start out with these guys. If you guys would come up here, they're on the phone. They're probably looking at the weather. Rich, I just wanted to kind of introduce these guys.
Oh, please.
We did some, I know most everybody knows them, but we did some reorganizing with our, our job titles and delegating some authority to better serve the public and serve you guys. So I stand up here a lot of times and, and get a lot of credit for things that we do at the highway department. I got a letter the other day about some brush that we cut and a stump that we took out, and had my name on it. It was addressed to Chris Winkler, and thank you, and you did a good job. And to tell the truth, I didn't cut a tree, and I don't even know where the job was. But the, these guys are the ones that are doing it. So all the good things that happen, happen because these guys behind me are, are leading our forces and making decisions on the betterment of the county. Now, there's some times where I take a little heat and.
Because of those guys?
Well, I was gonna say, I, I don't think I take any heat because of these guys. I think if there's something that I've got to take heat for, we didn't do as good as we should have, it's where I feel like I failed on, on leading these guys to take the proper avenues. So I'll take all the blame and let them have maybe 80% of the credit. I get a little bit of credit. But Rich Graber, he's, he's been with us for eight years, I think, and he started out as a truck driver, went to a grader operator, and then assistant road foreman, then road foreman, now Rich Graber is our assistant highway supervisor, which is a new position we have not had. With all the things that we're tasked with doing at the highway department, the grants and the funding, and the road construction, and the looking ahead, sometimes I don't have all the time to do the day-to-day stuff. So as the assistant superintendent, Rich will be doing more of the, the day-to-day operations and handling them, dictating them, being able to spend more time with the, the people that do have issues. And I, I hate to say, you know, most of the people that contact us is because there's a problem. Their drainage is not right, they need more rock, or, or something, you know. People don't just call us to, to tell us they don't need anything, you know. They, they only call you when they need something. So Rich handles that. Sometimes if I gotta go out and meet somebody, you know, if I meet two people, it might burn up two hours of my day to drive out there and listen to their problem and talk to them. So that's why we've incorporated that position. He does a really good job at it. Troy Foose has become our road foreman. He started out as a truck driver. He's only been there a few years, but I think he's served the, the county as what, 16 years, 15 years, under Gary, and then Gary shipped him off to me to, to watch him for a while after he retired. But he's, he's our road foreman, so when Rich decides that there's a task that we need to do, he'll be out with the crew, working side by side with the crew. Makes it easier for the crew that they've got somebody out there on the ground, making decisions and not having to call back to office to see what to do. Makes us more efficient. And then Jason Oaks is our, our old guy, our veteran. He's been there for 23 years, and I think Jason's done every job that we've had. He started out as a truck driver, equipment operator, and then he's been on the bridge crew, been a carpenter on the bridge crew for, for I don't know how many years, most of his tenure. And now Jason is our bridge foreman. And, and he's one of the reasons why our county bridges are in such good shape. And Michael Stevenson with SJC's here, and he could probably attest to it. If you had any questions on, on our bridges that we've got compared to other counties, I mean, they've maybe have 15, 20 bridges on their list that need to be replaced, and we've got five, four, something like that. And it's because of the work that he does and the knowledge he has. So I just wanted to bring him up here and recognize him, introduce him to everybody, and glad that Tom's here too, so introduce him to the council. And then if, like Mike Grant or Don Spillman have any questions, sometimes they don't have to call me. Now they can call one of these guys and ask them a bunch of questions, get some quotes. That's really all I wanted with them, unless anybody's got any, anything to say for them, or I don't think they want to talk. They're just up here to, to, to look purty, but.
Well, I mean, again, people, I love our, the annual county, county, state of the county meeting that we do now, because we're able to get information. It's always like 60% highway department, which is great, because, you know, roads are the number one issue that, you know, they used to call us road commissioners back in the day. So the, the 800-plus miles and, you know, ditches on each side of the road, I mean, you can do all the math, and, you know, is it gonna be 45 degrees, or is it gonna be 35, and when's that gonna shift? And, oh, just the stuff that you guys deal with is just amazing. So we try to stay out of your guys' hair, and take that as a compliment, that, you know, we're not micromanaging. I don't think I've received a call from the shoppies in eight years, which is.
Well, we hired one of them.
Which is ironic, because eight years ago, we hired one of their, one of their kids. But, but no, it's, my phone doesn't ring very often regarding roads.
My phone doesn't. My phone is, used to ring anymore for roads. I mean, it's very few.
Out and about talking to people, 90% of what I hear is very positive. And then you always have those that's gonna be upset because somebody's road got done and they're dead, and they don't understand the criteria behind it. But over the holidays, I went out to Edwardsport and the bridge that was placed out there. Pretty nifty how that was done. And I think it saved the county quite a bit of money as well. So I think, I think you're all doing a great job.
Yeah, we, we try. I mean, we've, I don't know, kind of, when one person's trying to control everything, it just, it doesn't work. So for you guys giving me the flexibility to, to let these other guys step in and make decisions on, on behalf of the county and, and what you guys want, I think it, it makes for a, a better team. And, you know, we're, I want to say, we're trying to do customer service and production, I guess, get things done. And, and the, the people out there, they are customers, I guess, in a sense. And when they call and tell us about something, you know, I, my first reaction's not to get mad. My first reaction, that's another set of eyes on the road that I don't have to go look at now. They've called me and told me what the problem is, and I just need to fix it. So.
You guys are doing a great job. Just, you know, continue to let us know what you guys need to do your jobs. And again, obviously, we have limitations, but just assume the sky's the limit, and then, you know, we'll, we'll kind of bring it back down if we need to, and then present it to the council. And he's got a great working relationship with all departments. So I don't think you're stuck with what you have, and this is the way we've always done it. If he, he see newer, better, you know, let's work hard, you know, smarter and not harder type of mentality. Let us know what we need for the future. So Jason, Troy, and Rich, you know, congratulations, and I think this speaks volume of, of the work that you've done for the county. Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Couple other things, and I'll keep it short. I know you guys got a, got a big agenda. You know, kind of what Nathan said there about the, what the temperature's gonna be, like today, just what these guys facilitate to and what we're doing. The, the trucks that are out today hauling rock, because it's been pouring since probably nine o'clock last night. So our trucks are out pouring rock today, taking care of the gravel roads. Them same trucks, or the same trucks that have to be outfitted tonight for the, the potential snow and ice that we could have in the morning. So it's a, it's a great feat. We don't, we don't get to just set 10 trucks up for winter for snow and ice removal and sand and have everything all ready, and have them sit there, and then we jump in them like a fire truck and go. Them same trucks that are hauling rock today will be the same trucks that are pushing snow and spreading salt and sand tomorrow, and potentially the same trucks that'll be hauling rock again the next day. And, and that takes a little bit of, I guess, planning to, to get the trucks ready, get them prepped, get all the routes to the guys, and then to get them back to hauling rock, and then get them cleaned out, get them back to hauling dirt when they're ditching and stuff. So without these guys, you know, I'd do it, I guess, but makes it a lot easier having them. Couple other things, under the projects, I guess, the salt sand building, the concrete's been poured. They're gonna start Monday framing, doing the framing. All the concrete, I guess, is poured except for the, the skirt out front of the building, which we decided we didn't want them to pour that till next year. We, we gotta get some field dirt in there and let that get compacted and settled before they pour the skirt, which the skirt's nothing, really. So that's where we're at on the salt sand building.
When do you think it'll be done?
Uh.
Next season?
Did we say the end of March, I think? I'd have to look back, but I know we had changed that timeline and told them the, the end of March, and that's what they had said.
Okay.
One thing to think about, and we can talk about at the next Commissioners' meeting, is I might get with Jen and see what they've got, what you guys got committed already, but like the Commissioners' Highway Construction Project Fund, maybe being able to, to see what's already committed out of that fund for this year, and then use that money. And we've got a couple of projects in mind that we've been talking about, making a new corridor south of, of Old 50, if we could maybe dedicate some of that money towards that, that corridor. So we can talk more in detail about that at a, at a next meeting, but just to let you know, so we can start looking into, to them funds if they're available.
Well, I mean, historically, yeah, just from, from my perspective, I've always relied, relied on the highway supervisors as far as your buckets of money and, and your matching grants, and, because it's, it's hard for us to keep track of. So, I mean, as, as far as the, the finance side of it, I mean, if you feel, I'm just gonna rely on you to determine, are we gonna be able to still fund everything that we need to fund and renovate, and the, keeping everything rehabbed? And, and then, because first question is, do we have the money? And, and then if you say we do, then I, I definitely would be much more comfortable. And then second is, is deciding on the project. You know, the, and again, I'm talking out both sides of my mouth, because south of Highway 50, the traffic volume of population is much lower. And so we gotta be cautious of that. But north, especially in my district, the roads that need to be hard-surfaced are horse and buggy roads.
Getting tore up.
And I'm not comfortable hard-surfacing any more horse and buggy roads, because, until we get the permits up more. So I would love to see a corridor that opens up the southern part of the county, so that we can literally go from the northern part of the county to the southern part of the county on hard surface. We're talking about 900 East, from 100 South, take a swath of it, and then, and then the road really narrows. But basically looking at that as a one, two, or three-phase project and opening up 900 East, so that all that coal reclaimed area is now settled, I think is ready to be built on. I'm a pharmacist. I don't know why I think it's ready to be built on, but it's, and again, it is in my district, so full disclosure.
Well, we mentioned in a previous meeting that that area down there around Offordsville from, from 800 East to 1200 East, and from Old 50 to 700 South, is 22 square mile of gravel road. There's not a hard-surface road in that area. It, it doesn't have the, the most traffic in it. It doesn't have the most population or the most businesses, but is the largest single area in the entire county that has no paved surfaces on it, and there are people that live there. So our, our money that we get from the state to do our, our maintenance, basically, our overlays, our chip seals, I think we're still good on that. Our money that, that we're gonna need to continue to build new road and turn gravel road into hard-surface road, I think that's where we want to have a plan, as, as you three commissioners dictate what we should pursue, and then use the, like, the project money that we were using towards the Campbellburg Road and towards other things, use it to, to get a long-term goal, not, we don't want to operate to where, hey, what are we gonna do this year with that money? We kind of want to have a long-term fix. We know we've got this in the, in the Commissioners' Road Construction Projects, and if we use this much of it this year, we can get this far and just continue. And, and then we could add to it, and maybe we could talk to the council if, if we need, need to continue funding different avenues. But our ultimate goal is to, to turn our gravel roads into hard-surface roads. That's, that's what the people want. We do need to maintain our current infrastructure and what we have, but we've got to continue to build and grow.
Well, we have, and we'll get the numbers presented here in the next meeting or so, but, I mean, we started a number of years ago. And, I mean, if we sat here today and said, said we wanted a hard-surface 50-plus mile road, we'd be like, man, where do we start? But we started some time ago, and now we've, we just passed that number. And you'll get 20 calls when it's gravel and zero calls when it's hard surface, but, you know, that's just kind of part of it.
Yeah, and we, yeah, next meeting, we'll put that on the agenda for the Highway Department to present our, I guess, 2023 construction, what we did, our statistics. It's kind of a little state-of-the-county address that we'll give you. I know I said I was gonna give it at the end of the year, and then we got busy, and I know this meeting's busy for you, so I need to quit rambling on, but I will present that next meeting. Two other things. One, the NDOT, unofficial detours, I don't know if you've seen that. I've got papers here for you guys to sign. One is Troy Road. We had told you they're gonna replace the culvert just south of the 50 bypass, and it's gonna take six days to do that. And so the, the, NDOT sends me a couple of detours that they want to use, and then we've got to okay it, or change it, or whatever. So we came up with one detour. The first detour they were suggesting was to go out 250 South, out to 57, then north to 150 South, which is the road by the new Casey's. But I ex-nayed that, because I didn't want to take any more traffic to that intersection there.
Pretty narrow.
It's pretty narrow, and it's, 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 I don't know, it's dangerous. It's just not, there's not a stoplight there. It's the one that goes just south, or just north of Walmart, in front of McAllisters, and that was gonna be the intersection that traffic was supposed to route around the detour. So we decided against that, and they were okay with it. So I've got the, you should have it in your packets, I guess. I've got the actual agreement with NDOT, and what they'll do is they'll go out and look at the road prior to setting the detour up. And I think they actually video it, and then we'll go out and look at it. Then they do their, they route the traffic around, they supply all the detour signs, and then after the construction project's done, they go out and look at it, and we go out and look at it and evaluate it, and they will reimburse us for any damage that's done by the, the highway. And they will reimburse us for any damage that's done by the highway rated traffic going on local roads. So if you guys agree with it, I've I've got this here. This one is the Troy Road one, and it's got a map on the back of it. It does show the show the detour, got a place for signature. And I've got it. I might have messed up. If you guys already changed your, there's the president and everything the same, right? Yeah, so I got Nathan, Michael, and Ron in that order on there. And I've got another one here. I can explain it now or after you sign that one.
Yeah, it's fun to do this one first. Gentlemen, any questions on that?
Yeah, I have no issue with the detour.
No.
I entertain a motion to approve the MOU for the unofficial detour for Troy Road.
Same.
A motion made by Commissioner Taylor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
A motion passes three zero.
And the next one is on State Road three fifty-eight. It's gonna be a little bit bigger of a closure. It's a, I think they're doing some overlay and paving. It's gonna be a thirty-day closure. And we got, oh, it's, I guess it's actually, it's State Road fifty-eight, but it's County Road four twenty-five east. And it goes north up into Eleanora. And then it turns back into State Road fifty-seven, but I had to make the detour for fourteen hundred north. So if you're going up fifty-eight, it goes north into the south side of Eleanora. Fourteen hundred north cuts over from State Road fifty-eight, State Road fifty-seven. And that's not really where where we want the truck traffic to go and everything, but if I made the detour go all the way through Eleanora, the the traffic's gonna take that shortest route. They're gonna take fourteen hundred north, no matter what the detour says, because we're not gonna close that road off. And if they take that, if they take that and it's not an unofficial detour and it gets damaged, the state will not reimburse us for it. So I had to put it as an unofficial detour to be able to get reimbursed for the damage that could possibly happen. I'm hoping they go all the way straight up into Eleanora, but but I don't think they will. I think they'll see that that paved road as a cut through, and they'll take it. It gets damaged if it's not documented now as an unofficial detour. But it does get damaged, then we're a hundred percent responsible for it.
How are the radiuses on that road to get both intersections to get turned like semi-traffic? I know the next one north, I drop trailers out there all the time.
I don't, I don't know for sure on that, Mike. I don't want to say and be wrong.
Yeah, hope there's enough room. I know when you get back over to fifty-seven going westbound on fourteen hundred, it's right on a kind of a skew.
Yeah, the semi should continue to take to go all the way north.
And they're not going to either, so.
Yeah. So I don't.
That's a thirty-day closure.
Yeah, that's a thirty-day closure.
What timeframe is that?
I think it is on here. I didn't even look, actually. I did, but I can't remember.
Don't see the date.
I don't, so if I see a
I don't see a date.
A date on that closure either.
It'd be the spring or summertime, probably.
Yeah.
Right, but it, yeah, it doesn't have the, they don't let us know.
That route will probably schools don't even know about that route, too.
Yeah, but I think it may say on the email that I got from, I just was thinking it was on this paper.
So it's fourteen, fourteen hundred, is that gravel or hard surface?
It's hard surface.
Semi should be able to make that corner, because I know there's a couple of farmers that live on that road.
On to fifty-eight there.
Fifty-eight and fifty-seven, yeah.
Okay. Any questions, gentlemen? If not, I entertain a motion to approve.
Same.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Taylor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold. All in favor? Motion passes through zero.
Better head from NDOT. It's all in red.
It's from two different people.
I know, I see red.
Red's usually not good.
Okay, the the last thing, I don't think we're gonna actually speak on it today, but it was the the bridge ratings, the state mandated emergency vehicle load ratings. We had been questioned, and we thought maybe we might have a somebody here asking questions about it. I know I've talked to the sheriff about it, and but I've reached out to SJCA, which does our countywide bridge inspection. And Michael Stevenson had found out some information. We've probably got ninety percent of the information. It's it's very difficult to explain and read. So after talking with Michael, he was here if we needed to answer questions, if if somebody was here. But maybe we thought we would talk to you guys at the highway meeting and then and bring it forward to the commissioners' meeting.
Yeah, we had a, whatever they mandated those signs, which I think the federal government put them all up to with NDOT. We had those two or three, four years ago, whatever it's been now. Had a lot of farmers asking about that at the time, and it's it's not really, it doesn't read the way the sign reads for actually semi-crossing that or something. So we kind of explained how it was, but we, I didn't have the full formula because it's kind of hard to figure it out. And then the other day, we had a recent gentleman ask about the sign, trucks running over, over, you know, semis running over bridges that's not rated right. I wanted Michael Stevens to speak on that behalf, but I know it's a difficult formula and try to explain it. So if, you know, if we don't have time today and we can't, we're only ninety percent, I'd like to have a hundred percent.
Yeah.
If we can do that at a later date, that'd be fine.
I got to thank, and I talk too much, and I've seen your guys' appointments were going down, so we can move it to next meeting.
I'm I'm fine with that.
Whatever you guys want to do.
I just want to make sure the motor and public's aware, the way those signs read is not the actual tonnage, what it can actually traverse across that bridge.
We need to get Michael to explain that, because we can get it knocked off now.
It's fine with me. How do you guys want to do it?
Okay, we can do it then.
He probably knows it all from the top of his head.
There might be, there might be some things that we need to go back and find. Here's the
Language terms, I think it's just a standing weight, that if the truck stops on the bridge, it's rated for that.
Rated for a single axle.
Yeah, per axle.
Per axle.
We had some farmers that were taking runarounds to avoid it, and they didn't need to do that.
Michael Stevenson, SJCA, Chris called me on Friday and asked me if I knew enough to to speak to you guys today on load ratings. And I said, no, but I would try to educate myself enough to to stand before you today. And so I met with Dan Mulaney and Ron Munoz in our office, engineers on these these projects, and asked questions in regards to the load ratings. I know that you guys had one in particular that you wanted to to ask about, and so we kind of dove directly into that one to try to come up with some solutions. And I have passed some of that information on to Chris, some ways to try to make things better. But when there's, there are multiple ways to post load ratings. So if it says the load rating is ten tons on a bridge, for example, if you, that that is the general load rating. And there are differing load ratings for emergency vehicles, and that's just because of the laws that have been passed. It says, hey, we've got to allow various vehicles to get through in in various reasons. But when it says ten ton, that is the load limit. However, if you guys choose to, there's different ways to post that. You can do it by axles as well. And on some shorter bridges, that makes a big difference. For example, let's see. Here's an example of one that says it's a twenty-eight ton limit, but that it's a two, two axle would be twenty-eight ton, three axle would be thirty-one ton, four axle plus is thirty-four ton. The problem is, is when you post that and then you post below that, now the emergency by axle, now you have a lot of information that the public is trying to understand as they're driving by. And the engineers are concerned that they won't know what is approved and what is not approved. And so therefore, they tend to go more conservative and say, just post the general tonnage. So I don't know if I am answering your question, but we, it all comes down to we are required to follow what the NDOT manual for bridge inspection is. We will go by those rules in order to determine what the postings are. On case-by-case basis, there there may be things that can be done to increase what the the load rating is on a bridge, a little bit of maintenance, that sort of thing. And that's where Chris and I have tried to talk about the bridge in particular.
I don't want to interject here, but I think our current issue that we're having is we have farmers who don't know if they can drive across the bridge.
Right.
We're not really looking at putting in more money to make the bridges beefier unless we legitimately have to.
It's actually less.
But it's 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 more of a case of interpreting what does that sign actually mean?
Yes. So if it says sixteen tons, it means sixteen tons. But there are ways that if you choose to put it differently, you can do it by axles, which would potentially make it larger, a higher load rating for a larger vehicle with more axles.
How many categories? How many axles? Four? Is that like the maximum axles that we?
No, actually, I think that the chart I was looking at yesterday was showing five and maybe even six axles.
So in Davies County, I mean, I'm just trying to simplify this, how many five, six axle vehicles do we have going across our bridge? Or is it more, I don't even know what a semi is, but
Five axles.
Five axles for a semi?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you'd have to have it, you'd have to have five different weights on there.
It depends on how you do it. Sometimes they'll say four plus, you know, so they'll say if you have four or more axles, you can have this.
Okay.
Depends on how you do it.
Because we want farmers to use the bridges they can use without being confused.
Absolutely. And 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 that's what we discussed, and and I I know that that is the the plan. And and again, that's why we're trying to come up with some solutions for you that that you guys can do in-house.
At the time, they put those signs up though, at road school, I thought we, I mentioned that to somebody. Wasn't there, there's a, you got a rolling load, then you got a static load, and that number's a static load, right?
Now we're gonna get into the weeds deeper than I am.
I'm just saying, there's a difference between a rolling load and a static load.
And and you may be a hundred percent correct. I just have to bring my engineers in to to talk to you.
You didn't have any problems before the signs changed. Can we put the old signs back up?
Well, we never had any signs.
I'm sure NDOT will let you do whatever you want to do.
Always go back to the why. Why did we do what we did that's causing this problem? Because, I mean, I don't know the why.
It wasn't the county that done that. It was NDOT that done that.
It was mandated. They they made us do it. We had to have it done.
I believe that in two thousand and nineteen, NDOT made every bridge be load-rated. It was just part of their contract with with every county. And when they did that, it just brought all this stuff to light.
And that makes sense. I mean, we want the bridges load-rated.
Yes, yes. Yeah, and and I will say, they are conservative load ratings. That's part of the deal. They they want to make sure that, as I told Chris yesterday, you don't want to have a sixteen-ton load limit and then a seventeen-ton vehicle goes over it and topples it.
Yeah, I don't think that's the issue we're having. I think the issue we're having is it says a lower number, and they're like, whoa, that number's lower. But it's like per axle or it's rolling or it's something, something.
Right. Again, if you have posted sixteen-ton load limit, then sixteen-ton is the maximum weight for that vehicle. There are, there are ways to post it differently for axles, but that's up to you, and it does get even more confusing.
Could, again, Commissioner, speak up here. Could the two of you in thirty days provide us with suggestions? We don't want farmers taking detours on bridges that they can drive across. And can you guys help us fix that?
Yes, I sent an email to Chris yesterday with suggestions. And again, we were, we were addressing a specific bridge, and if there's other bridges that need to be addressed, then we can look at those in specific cases as well. But I do think that there are definitely ways that you can go to to improve this situation.
Okay, wonderful.
There's a lot of bridges. I think every bridge is posted, it's not posted rated high enough to carry a semi across it. The way, the way it reads, all thirty-six of those bridges, I'm Because a semi, semi's forty-ton, and farmers love to haul forty-four-ton. So unless it reads forty-four-ton, it's not gonna be right.
And again, even if it's a, if it says thirty-ton as the general load limit, it's possible that a semi, a five, a five axle, that there would be no limit for a five axle, depending on how the length of the bridge. And they'd have to look at individually the bridges, but yeah, we we can do that. It just depends on what you want to do.
Yeah, because if you got a short bridge, the three axes are gonna clear it before the two axes clear it, yeah.
Okay, well, maybe the you all, and it sounds like Michael's got a lot of expertise, you want to tap into that? Because it's, I mean, it's definitely not my space, but it's it's important.
It is, because I mean, I've had, back when those signs went up, I had several phone calls.
Yeah.
And talked to Phil about it, and basically I said to go ahead and keep using, continue using the bridges you always have in the past for the farmers. That's who reached out to me, it's farmers. Signs popped up, and then Harperstein came, and then everybody's cleared to cross those bridges at the time, so.
Okay.
And again, I just want to say, it was a mandate that came down from NDOT, and when we did the load ratings, we just have to follow what the manual says that we do, and that's why that came. It wasn't because we just wanted to put load ratings on bridges. It's just we're following what the law law is on that.
Makes sense, so, okay.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
So Jason, new bridge foreman, I got a job for you. We'll start with the bridge in question, and we had already started with that, but we'll start with that and continue on to the other bridges.
Yeah, and with that being in mind, if you guys find a a answer to this particular bridge, I mean, change it. You don't want to come back to another commissioners' meeting for approval. You guys are all
Can you put your phone number on the signs in case there's any questions?
I don't know. I think they already got Michael's.
I put it on my contact form.
So and I guess, one more thing, I'll just tell you guys, I appreciate you guys reappointing me for another, another year of service. I think I talked to Michael the other day. I happened to talk to him. I was like, I'm bringing these guys in to introduce them as the their new roles and everything like that. I said, what if I don't get reappointed? That's gonna be kind of awkward.
Well, now we got three, we got three backups.
So I appreciate it, everything you guys do to support me and everything the council does to to support me and the highway department.
Well, you do a great job, Chris. You make it easy. So, thank you.
Before we get off highway business, can we talk about the old county highway building? The city has an interest in the whole thing and talking about maybe moving all their recycling down there. And what the mayor wants to know is what that would look like. He's willing to, we could park a grader in there overnight. We could continue to do that. We could continue to park some other equipment as long as we needed to, and I would like to start that process.
Yeah, I think I was dropping off some stuff there several months ago, and that conversation came up, and Mr. Mattis called this weekend, and I let him know that, look, it's probably going to go to another source.
He can deal with the city.
He can deal with the city, so.
I have no issue with that.
I would like to move that building on.
Yeah, I would, too.
The question is, are we gonna sell it or are we just gonna give it to them?
I think we need to go through the, I think we need to sell. I mean, every transaction we've had with the city has been a business transaction, and we provide a service, we provide a fee, and we, obviously, we'd be good stewards, but I think we need to do appraise value, whatever the, whatever it is, but.
Well, like everything, their budgets are tied to ours, and I see every city of Washington resident pays county taxes, and I would be in favor of just donating the building to them.
I don't disagree, but I mean, we're paying them seventy-five thousand dollars a year to do ten hours, ten hours a month of work for the permit and a half for eight years, so it works both ways, I guess.
That's, that is really a fee-based service, and our fee should reflect that.
So regarding the building, I don't have any problem getting rid of it. I think let's follow the statutory process, and if we want to
Maybe if they've got an interest, maybe they just reach out and propose what their plan is. You all can evaluate it, and then we go through it. There is an interlocal exception to the general rules.
Right.
If you choose to go that direction, but
Yeah, I don't have any problem with that being the final outcome.
Probably ought to get appraised, see where we're at, and then, like I said, if we want to waive that fee or lower that fee, we can within our local agreement.
I think that's a great idea, Ron.
I'll reach out to the mayor.
Reach out to the city, and that'd be great. And then in an ideal world, it'd be great to take that hazardous waste facility out of the heart of Washington, find somewhere else to put it, buy a grader.
Be their problem.
It would be, but we're just adding, we're making that hazardous waste center even bigger, right in the heart of Washington, so. That'll be the city and all their boards, they can fix that one, so. All right, next up, Lauren, good morning. We've got the quarter book shelving. I know you and Ron have spent a lot of time on this
Good morning.
Five-state systems.
We have, and as you know, you've already voted to do the shelving. It's being made now, but we decided to wait We have, um, and as you know, you've already voted to do the shelving, it's being made now, but we decided to wait off on the signature till January. Um, so here we are. I do want to point out that we have been able to destroy a little bit more than we initially thought, and we had them come out and remeasure, and we went from a hundred and eighty-nine thousand down to a hundred and thirty, that's seven thousand, so we did get a big cut in there. And a hundred thousand, and that's coming from perpetuation fund, so.
And the thirty-seven's coming from, um, somewhere. Okay, yeah, we'll figure out where that comes from.
Okay.
It come out county built.
You can, you can write a check before you leave.
No, but in all seriousness, if it needs to come out county building or whatever, it's taken out of the most appropriate account, so. Okay, uh, so a lot of work's been done with this, kind of, um, a D R K motion to approve.
I'm moved.
A motion made by Commissioner Taylor, do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
A motion passes three zero.
Okay, thank you guys.
Lauren, thanks for all your work on this.
Appreciate it.
All right, next up, uh, Joe's not gonna be in today. I know that, that Eclipse, um, sides, I've seen some emails coming through. I've just got any updates on the M A side, on the solar eclipse, none to give, okay, perfect. I, I just want to have this as a, a done item, just to, so we can check in on it. It'll be here before we know it. Um, sub recipients, semi annual report, and we've got few things here. This is, um.
S I D C, isn't it?
Well, this is from Washington Township. It's for.
Fire, fire station.
Oh, with the fire station.
It is through S I D C.
Okay. All right, so they just need this.
Board on it, yeah. We're the, we're the sponsor on it, so that's crazy.
It's a report that doesn't report anything, so, okay.
It is what it is.
It is what it is. I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
A motion made by Commissioner Taylor, do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. Next up, we got the annual gross wage report. One of the benefits of working in county government is you have to publish what everybody makes, so fortunately, in the private sector, we don't have to. We have got the, uh, manual gross wage report here that, um, commissioners should have all received.
Yes.
Are there any questions or any discrepancies that you guys saw?
Nothing I've seen.
Okay. I'd entertain a motion to approve the gross wage report.
So moved.
A motion made by Commissioner Taylor, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. All right, renovation update, um, the, they're, they're moving, uh, they just talked, talked with Dale. I talked with Hudson's last night, um, I know there's a meeting on Friday. Grant's working through some of the intricacies. I think we got the green light, the commissioners can be able to meet now, the, the folks during the walkthrough, and, um, more of his, like, Mad Men services.
It's an on, you're on site, you can do an on-site inspection and.
There'll be a tomorrow also, or not? Do they get moved?
Um, there is a meeting tomorrow, I think. I don't have that one.
I've got it in my calendar, so that's the reason I was asking.
Yeah, I, I don't.
I had one for Friday, and then I had one for tomorrow, so I'll go back and.
What time Friday?
Friday's nine AM.
Nine AM, there's, they're day-to-day person. I got an email last night, they're day-to-day person.
Been through mine from last night yet.
They're gonna be here at, uh, nine AM, um, on Friday. So we do have a standing meeting. I've got a standing meeting with Dale, um, Jeremy, just, uh, fifteen minutes sync up about every week, just to make sure we're all on the same page, and then, once we get rolling, then we'll defer that on, so. They got the, the, they do have the initial, uh, office for an F F E, um, budget back. It's obviously, we thought it was gonna be high, but they're gonna be able to decrease it significantly because some of the offices, we're gonna be able to reuse everything that's. So there's about a hundred thousand dollars of that that needs to come down, and he, he doesn't feel there's any concern with that at all. There's a two hundred and eight thousand dollars left in relocation expenses. I'm, I'm waiting for an update from Lara and Jeremy to see where are we at with that number, because I think there's gonna be some left there. The courthouse, uh, equipment, we have a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in that line item. This jab system, I think, um, Dale said that we're gonna be able to buy that in modules. So as you add more courtrooms to it, then you upgrade the modules. So the hundred and twenty might get us in the door, uh, full, all out, it's gonna be, could be as high as three hundred. We don't have that final number yet, if, when it's all fully equipped, but we're hoping some of that money can come from the F F E budget. And the windows, um, I've been talking with Ashley from the, I call it historical society, D N R, okay, perfect. And from D N R, she had some more, a couple of questions for Coy and Jeff Owens. The windows that they're, Jeff and Coy are proposing are, are expensive windows, but they're two hundred thousand dollars less than the approved windows. Uh, so from a ten-foot distance, they have to have the same profile as the existing as much as possible. So they think they're on to something. The covenant ends September first of twenty-five, construction should be done May of twenty-five. Um, so, uh, it's T B D on, on the windows, so we're still work in progress. We've done everything we can to try to have a good product, lowest possible cost, so. Meeting Fridays would be great, if everyone can be there, that'd be great. Next thing we're gonna have to talk about is, um, they're getting some requests as far as the, the old stuff, the trim, the wing scoting, the doors. Right now, it's all just gonna be discarded because we're not going to put it back into the project, most of it.
Right.
So it, in a normal project, it would just get discarded. So there's some folks who have reached out, some have already reached out to some other folks about, what do you do with that old stuff? So we do have quite a bit of interest in department heads and some local folks. I, I want to create a fair system, as fair as possible, where we know who gets what, and then, then what we think's reusable. Whatever we feel is reusable, we'll take that and kind of quarantine it, just store it. And then what we don't think's reusable, we'll try to have some system, or we just have a big mosh pit and have everyone just go in, or?
That's kind of what we've done, when we've done the annexes across the street.
Okay.
Just had people go through there and kind of say what they wanted.
And we do have a, I'm assuming, an old ordinance in place where we can work through it. Some questions about it, but you have, you have an auction. I mean, the stuff that can be reused, obviously needs to be reused.
Right.
Can't be reused, and the auditor determines it's, doesn't have a certain value, then there's different line.
We could do some kind of auction, just have a one-day auction or something.
It's February twelfth theoretically is when the project starts, so we've got a, a window of time where we don't want, some of the stuff's pretty cool. Someone wants it, I want them to get it. Anyway, we're working on that, so.
Whatever can come out that way without paying somebody else to move, remove it.
Yeah, and, and, and they want to remove it themselves. Um, they've got, I'm talking, they as in three or four people, like different people. And I haven't given them any blessing. I just said, look, we gotta create a process, but.
I, I'm comfortable with anything we do, just, uh, give people the opportunity to do it.
I was really glad that Jen sent that out, uh, just to remind people, you know, we don't, we don't do this all the time, but it's, stuff doesn't, it doesn't belong to anyone in particular, it needs to go through a proper channel. Because there are gonna be people, people that want it, um, so thanks for doing that.
So I'll continue working.
At the end of the day, if we, I mean, if we choose not to do that, it's gonna go in the landfill, right?
It's going to the landfill, all right?
Yeah.
I, I don't know.
I'm, I'm sure that's the way it works.
So yeah, some of the stuff, like, you know, you can go on and on, but some of the stuff is pretty, pretty historic. Okay, I'll, I'll continue work with Grant and Jen, just make sure we don't violate any sort of statutes. But let you know what the proposed process is going to be. The department heads will be involved, and then we might be second or third in line if there's anything commissioners or council.
There is a few historical things in the commissioners' room that probably need to be done, something with the county needs to be. Just a few things, I mean, our original drawing for our county seals in there, and there even our flag is in there.
Has anybody checked with the museum to see if they're interested in any of that?
Some of that stuff.
It needs to be, it needs to go somewhere.
Lauren has been in contact, and I will mention and praise her on that piece. She has had the museum come in and start making, taking pictures of the building as it exists today, so then they also have pictures for once the reno is done.
So we've been a little cautious on reaching out yet, so we don't open the floodgate, but that's a great point, is, we, we just gotta figure out the chronological order.
Yeah, there's a few things I think the county needs to retain somewhere, or stand to have it.
Well, maybe Friday, we'll make a point to look through the commissioner's room and allocate stuff that we feel needs to be safeguarded, yeah.
On the bonds.
Oh, yes, please.
So we got, the, the deadline was Friday for bond, for bond, information coming back to refresh the bids on the, the cost of that. There are a variety of additional folks that have bid on that. Baker Tilly's asked for a call either today or tomorrow. I've asked Nathan if he could join me, um, and then we'll loop in the council, and I'll, I'll make sure to get that to you, but the, the council, because they're, you know, Tony's involved as a banker, I just wanted to make sure to keep him away from it if he can. And then, um, but I've asked, again, Nathan to join me, so we should, we should know today or tomorrow what the cost of that uh, debt will be, um, should still be able to close later this month on the bonds.
It'll be done by the end of the month, I think.
Ideally, so.
Okay. Yeah, we're about ready to get this thing on.
All right, Nathan, Kevin's got something? Hey, Kevin.
Okay, was that all you had? Okay.
That was Kevin Meyer speaking.
Kevin Meyer, said, uh, volunteered his auctioneer services perhaps, um, if we need an auctioneer for the stuff, so, appreciate that. And volunteer, great.
Volunteer or volunteer?
All right, thank you for that. All right, what else did we, oh, Ron, did you want to talk about this?
It's, it's, we're, we've been working on that for, it's, has to do with the building commissioner. The whole idea was the city's in a bad spot on the two-mile radius because our codes don't match up with theirs, as well as the fees. And like you said, we pay the city seventy thousand dollars. Our fee structure for building permits are a lot lower, and so there's an opportunity to get equal with the city to help recoup some of that cost, take it off the taxpayer. But Michael recommended, recommended go to the A P C board for their review, and, uh, we've got it set up to where the big problem was, who this whole thing is, it was never explained that the fees that we currently collect come back to our general fund. It's under the impression that it stayed with the city, so they were gonna have to amend their contract because those fees come back to us, that simplifies what was proposed six, eight months ago. So what I have in that packet is a copy of what was proposed six, eight months ago, front page is what's currently proposed. And, but he wants the board to look at it first, so.
Yeah, I mean, we, we need, we, we need to definitely address this issue. My concern is, if, if, if I build a million-dollar building in Davies County, the only reason I'm getting a permit is because of your zoning, not your, your zoning. So to put that back on me as a builder because of your zoning, when I'm stimulating the local economy with a million-dollar investment, to me sounds non-free market. Whereas the zoning is to protect the constituents of Davies County, is why we have zoning. So, because the permit fees for the city, I mean, we're, it's gonna cost you thirty thousand dollars to build a huge warehouse.
Well, it's, it's ten dollars, ten dollars a square foot.
Yeah, so.
Or ten cents a square foot.
And, and for what? Whereas, you know, eight years ago.
Well, they have to approve the permits, they have to go through the inspection.
But eight years ago, there was none required.
But if you're gonna spend, from an economic development side, if you're gonna spend a million dollars in Davies County, you want it zoned. You don't want a hog farm going next to you or a turkey farm. I mean, you can argue it both ways.
You can argue it both ways.
There's, there's other ways that that fee structure doesn't have to match exactly line up with the, it could be just a per fee on a certain area, residential, commercial, industrial.
If you're causing damage, if you're causing damage to the county, you should be paid for that damage. So the buggy permit, I mean, I made that abundantly clear, uh, with the committees, that if you, you caused the damage, you're paying for it. We're not really causing any damage by building buildings. Because for two hundred years, we had no zoning.
You're charging the property taxpayer for that service.
To protect them.
And, and so it should be, it's, it's a user fee.
But it's for their protection, so.
Well, not only theirs, but everybody that lives around them and the whole county.
Exactly, so it should be a community funded.
I disagree. I think it's a fee-based service.
I think it's, I think it's an additional tax that we're, I don't want to.
It's a fee.
And that's what government will do to you after a number of years. When we take money from a wage earner, it's a tax or a fee. They're all bad F words, in my opinion.
Four-letter words to say. I don't disagree with that, but if I'm not building anything, I don't think I should have to subsidize somebody that is.
Well, then get, let's get rid of zoning, because you don't need any protection from zoning.
Then you won't get any development, because you have to have zoning.
We did for two hundred years, we didn't have zoning.
And look what happened since we put it in.
You had nothing.
Oh, oh, my gosh.
Yeah.
You can look at what's going on around here the last twenty years and say nothing.
I don't say nothing, but, okay, yeah, you, but what was the cause of it?
The employment numbers panned it out, the success valuation pans it out by every measurable.
But is it causational or relational? And that's the challenge with government, so anyway, uh, I don't, I don't care.
Can we just get it emailed over to the board so we can send it over to the A P C if that's?
Yeah. I would like to bring up, since we're talking about the A P C board, um, I've got one year left here, so. Would either, either one of you two want to serve on the A P C board?
I think my brother might be on it, so.
So you'd be a conflict.
So I, I probably wouldn't.
I can continue serving, serving for this year, but then you guys will have to make a decision next year.
Okay. Yeah, I don't care for the A P C board to review it, um, but I don't, I don't want there to be any insinuation that we, we got three votes on it. And we need to.
There's also a copy of an email back in February where I'd sent out a much larger plan due to the contract with the city, but at that time, you were okay with it, so, and I know things change.
Uh, the A P C just.
Well, the contract with the city didn't have anything to do with increasing taxes, so.
The A P C board is an advisory board of the commissioners, so it's just advisory, it's not, the commissioners just have to make a.
Right, but when the horse gets out of the stable, it's hard to get it put back in.
I think there should be a fee of some sort, just to help compensate what we're paying the county, the city. But like a ten cent per square foot, you know, you get to a hundred thousand, two hundred thousand square foot, that's a huge number.
And then what we're gonna do, we're gonna waive all the fees for the big guys, and then all the small guys are.
I'm just saying, if we have a per, 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 permit fee, you know, a reasonable fee to help compensate the, the, uh, permitting process and the.
There's still no. I guess the reason we went down this road to begin with is to provide some funding to clean up some distressed properties and monitor those which are still a problem, not only within the two-mile radius, but outside.
In high visibility areas.
That's why we attacked it.
Yeah, yeah, I don't disagree. I don't, I'm, I'm not trying to throw the baby out with the bathwater. So, I mean, I, I think we send this over to the A P C, have them review it, and then, um, and get their feedback, and then we'll evaluate. I do think we need to do something, uh, but I just don't want us making money off of this.
All we want, we'll still be subsidizing the operation. There's a sheet in there on what it would have caused under the new fee structure.
Yeah.
And we still don't hit seventy thousand dollars.
All right, let's go and send this over to the A P C.
Okay.
Just have them take a look at it, let us know the feedback, so.
Can you forward that email, please? Could you do that, Commissioner?
I'll do, here's a copy of it. I don't have it in any email.
Okay.
One to Jen and one to Grant.
Do you have a word document of that, or is that all you?
Just copies from the building commissioner's office.
Who, who created this?
I did.
Can you email it, just so I can easily forward it along, or?
The cover page I can.
Okay.
All right, gentlemen. Anything, uh, else, we could have the order, see, no, we have a meeting after this one, right?
Let's talk about that, perhaps just briefly. Um, we've got a executive session coming up here shortly, just to cover items that have been pending or threatened, legal matters. We're gonna cover that here shortly. We also have one tomorrow, and I want to loop the commissioners in on that specifically. We have a request from the judges for a handful of things, and I'll forward that over to you. The council's gonna be meeting about that tomorrow. I think there's just some confusion about the actual details. Um, I think there's just some confusion about the actual details there. So I just want to, I guess, prep you a little bit in advance on what, on what the request is. It seems like the council is taking care of it completely. It's almost entirely fiscal question, but we'll want to have both the council and the commissioners on the same page.
So the commissioners need to be here tomorrow then? What time?
It's not advertised for the commissioners to participate. I think the council's able to handle it on its own, but I'll, I'll loop you all in.
Okay.
As need be.
Okay, this sounds good. All right, gentlemen, anything else?
I don't have anything else.
If not, we'd entertain a motion to approve payroll claims and to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Taylor. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The motion passes three zero. Right, um, I do have a little.
Yep. I don't think we're going to be long at all.